At this time, I'd call this meeting to order. The presentation of the colors tonight is from North Buncombe High School. Please rise.
Here it is. Colors. Ready. Cut. Forward. Colors. Hold. Left. Base. Three seconds.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here it is. Colors. Ready. Right. Base. Just the colors. Forward.
Tonight, I'm going to ask that you remain standing and present a moment of silence. I want us to focus on the fact that we have lost a former Buncombe County student who's being praised as a hero. Riley Howell graduated from TC Robertson in 2016. This past Tuesday, as many of you know, he was killed in the tragic UNC Charlotte campus shooting. By all accounts, he died trying to stop the accused gunman. I want to say on behalf of the Board of Education, Riley's family and friends are in our thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. You may be seated. At this time, I would... I'm looking for a pervert of the agenda, and I need to remove an item on the agenda, which is the action item for Kane Creek Middle School Capital Outlay Athletic Allotment Request. And also, an addendum for the personnel report. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Back then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's time for the superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to begin by recognizing the members of our Capital Outlay Committee and the dedicated time and efforts that they took in participating in this process. This was excellent work within a very comprehensive, yet efficient, process. I know several of us, old timers, that have had the opportunity to serve on that committee, unanimously believe it's one of the best experiences that we have and that young administrators can have in the entire district. Joe Huff, our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Tim Fairley, Clark Wyatt, Barry Pace, Carol Ray, Greg Hensley, and our principal representatives, Tanya Robinson, Jamie Johnson, Jeremy Stowe, and Carrie Lynch. And a very special thanks to Tina Thorpe, who managed and connected all the data and all the information. Eighty million dollars of requests with thirteen million dollars of 4042 funding that was available. So that was a monumental job, and I think the Board would agree, based on our work session this afternoon, that they did an excellent job. In our moment of silence from Madam Chair, we recognize the tragedy that recently occurred on the UNC Charlotte campus. And once again, it underscores the importance of school safety and preparedness. And one component involves the assessment of our school campuses and buildings. That process has been initiated in both the Asheville City and Buncombe County school systems as a result of the school's security assessment, and that was funded through the Buncombe County Capital Commission. Mr. Huff, any quick updates you want to give the Board and the public?
Dr. Baldwin, we're pleased that we are off to a good start. We're actually doing twelve schools, eight in Buncombe County and four Asheville City. The interviews are already on the way. We expect the team from our firm that we're contracted in will be in May 13th through 24th to do those twelve schools.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Huff. As National Child Abuse Month just ended earlier this week, I want to take this opportunity to reinforce the message that Buncombe County Schools has been presenting in our reproductive health and safety classrooms for over thirty years. We have always stressed the importance of healthy relationships, setting boundaries, consent, and both preventing and reporting inappropriate sexual contact. We strive to create a safe and nonjudgmental learning environment, but also to provide a safe place for all students to report any unwelcome conduct. Our three reproductive health and safety educators provide these consistent messages at all of our schools. And additional presentations and resources are also available from community agencies that we work very closely with, including Our Voice and HelpMate. And a special thanks to Ms. Debbie Bryant for coordinating those efforts. I'd like to recognize a few recently-held programs that impressively showcased the skills and talents of our students in Buncombe County Schools. First, our Top Scholars Banquet that was held at Downtown Renaissance on Tuesday. All of our Board was present and participated. That honored the top academically performing seniors in our high schools. And Dr. Darren Waters was the guest speaker, and he gave a very inspirational talk that was centered on curiosity. Darren is not only a highly distinguished professor of history at UNC Asheville, but he, by the way, is a graduate of Buncombe County Schools. And if we had top scholar back then, I'm sure that Dr. Waters would have been a top scholar himself. Our All-County Middle School and High School Strings Concert was held last Friday at Irwin High School, and our student musicians played to a packed house. The Fourth Annual Do the Right Thing Essay Contest. And "right" is W-R-I-T-E. It is sponsored by the U.S. Attorney's Office, and that took place in late April. And this year's contest was won by Sadie Coke Miller, a student at AC Reynolds Middle School. These student essays reflected upon the prevention of violence and bullying in school communities. And I would like to, at a future date, invite Sadie to come in and actually read her essay to the Board and to the public. She did an outstanding job. Finally, today, TC Robertson hosted the Asheville-Buncombe Special Olympics, and thanks to our participating student athletes and the many, many volunteers from our schools and school communities. Speaking of showcasing, we do have some important events that are scheduled in this month of May. This Saturday, Nesbit Discovery Academy will once again host a STEM Day. It'll have lots of activities, be scheduled for children of all ages and families. Ms. Swanger, anything you want to add to that starting time?
Starting time is nine AM back in Nesbit, and ends at three. We've got food trucks, the Geodome, and wonderful family activities for grades K through eight.
Thank you. The month of May also represents theater productions at many of our high schools. And if you'll check the individual schools' websites for dates, times, and ticket information. And also a reminder that students are not in school on Memorial Day. In closing, I want to recognize our educators who took part in yesterday's Advocacy for Public Education Day, both those who rallied in Raleigh, as well as staff who advocated through local events, expanding Medicaid, elevating the minimum wage, increasing certified support staff in schools, and reinstating state retiree health benefits, because those go away, as I think most of us know, after 2021 for our new employees. Those are all certainly worthy goals for all of us to advocate for. That concludes my comments. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're welcoming good news. And I... Go ahead. I was going to say Lisa Roberts is going to do that. But you can go right ahead.
I don't have to do it. You can do it. No. Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This evening, we're going to invite Lisa Roberts up to come help us recognize several of our Pro Start students who recently represented BCS very well in a state competition. And Lisa Roberts is our CTE Curriculum Specialist.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm very proud that CTE can offer Pro Start programs in three of our high schools. This is a great entry point for our hospitality and tourism pathway. For those of you that don't know what Pro Start is, in a nutshell, I wanted to look up exactly what Pro Start says about itself. And it says that it is a program that teaches students about the art of cooking and managing a restaurant. Students are mentored by a professional chef while under the direct supervision and guidance of their high school teacher. So in Buncombe County Pro Start's fairly new program, we started it at North Buncombe three years ago. Then we added it two years ago at TC Robertson, and finally, at Irwin High School this past year. Each school just came back from a couple of weeks ago from a competition, a state competition, and they all did really, really well. North Buncombe's management team finished second in the state. TC Robertson's culinary team finished third in the state. And Irwin's management team finished third in the state also. We'd like to recognize all these teams tonight, but unfortunately, Irwin and TC Robertson could not be present because they had conflicts in their schedule. But each of their teachers sent a short message about their team and the experience they had, and they asked me to read them to you. TC Robertson competed in our first state Pro Start Invitational this past March. We took a management team, as well as a culinary team. Our culinary team finished a very strong third place. We were coached by Chef Trent Teasley from The Bistro on Biltmore Estate. A three-course meal had to be completed in one hour using only two butane burners and two tables as work services. We brought all of our own food and equipment from school and had to move it from the hotel to the event site, and she added "in the pouring rain." Our management team did very well also. They were coached by Sylvia Porach, former Robertson student, who is now in the Hospitality and Management Program at the University of Central Florida. They had to create a concept restaurant and present their concept to five sets of judges in an hour. Each set of judges asked questions about a different aspect of their restaurant. Overall, we learned a great deal, and I feel that we'll be better prepared for competition next year. We also enjoy getting to know the students from North Buncombe and Irwin, who are also competing in the event. And from Irwin, this is the first year for Irwin High School Pro Start. We've had full enrollment in Pro Start 1, and we're planning to offer Pro Start 2 in the 2019-20 school year. This year, Irwin's students have had the opportunity to compete, to complete internships, hear guest speakers, tour restaurants, earn a guest service professional credential, and a Serve Safe manager credential. All of these activities are preparing them for the restaurant and hospitality industry. This year, Irwin competed for the first time in the restaurant management team. Students Emily Carver, Michellea Edwards, and Laney Williams created an ice cream truck specializing in A2 milk. They created menu items and calculated costs for each item and wrote a radio commercial to Baby Shark. They placed third in the state, and each earned over $12,000 in scholarships. So North Buncombe is also here, and so I'm going to let them speak for themselves. So Amy Wyatt is their teacher, and she brought two of her students. And I had the privilege of going last year to Rhode Island with North Buncombe's Pro Start team last year. They won first in the state and went to Nationals, and they did awesome. And I'll let them tell you about that.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts, and thank you, Board. Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, we appreciate being here. I don't know if it's better or worse that I am here to actually speak, but I have two out of four of our team. And so this was the second year that we were able to compete. And while we did win second place in management this year, I hate to say it, it was a little bit of a letdown because we did win first place in state last year. So we're still really proud of this trophy. And all the kids got a medallion as well that they'll get to keep. So we're very proud at North Buncombe to be adding to our trophy case. I'm going to need a shelf. I guess there's no Capital Outlay money for that. So one day, maybe I'll get a shelf. But until then, I'm really proud of these kids. I told them a few minutes ago that I was going to make them speak, and Jake started rocking back and forth, so I might not make him speak. But their concept was, they did an Italian restaurant this year, and it was called Manja, which in Italian means... We've argued about this a lot. It either means eat or to eat, but I say it means to eat. Giorgio says it means eat, and his family's Italian. So the restaurant concept was that they made all of their own pasta in-house. And so part of the project, while these in the management competition, while they don't cook at the actual competition like the culinary teams do, they have to cook ahead of time because their packet has to have their menu, and they have to have pictures of between one and four menu items. So of course, we include four. So they made actually five of their dishes, and we picked the best pictures. And so they actually created those. We made a lot of pasta in Room 116 at North Buncombe High School. Really over making pasta. But I'm going to actually make Giorgio tell you why we chose the name Manja. He's not happy about me making him say this, but it was his brainstorm.
So when I go to St. Louis to see my grandparents in the summer, my grandmother, she'd cook dinner, and we'd be downstairs. So to get us to come up to eat, she'd go Manja at us to come up and eat.
So that was...
Italian thing.
And so Italian. We tried to... We would try to make him say it like his grandmother said it because we were convinced that that's not how she said it. So we also worked with a chef mentor, actually, a chef out of Hendersonville. Thank goodness for technology. We had a lot of phone conferences with her. But her name is Chef Jesse Roque from The Never Blue. If you've never been out there, I'm going to plug them a little bit because it's amazing, and you should go there. So we appreciate all of the support from our school. Dr. Cersei and the teachers at North Buncombe, they helped us get there by buying a lot of meals. We prepared to pay for the uniforms and the hotel to get there, and for the Board, for you have always recognized us and communications. And we just... It means a lot to them, even to see their pictures of their food on the school Facebook page. And so I know they're not real talkative tonight, but they really are talkative kids. So thank you.
Thank you.
This CTE program is phenomenal. And because my district started it, of course, it's the best one. But I will have to concede to my fellow Board member, Amy Churchill, that she can now do some cooking in the TC Robertson district. And Mr. Bryant is going to benefit from the food that comes out of Irwin High School. So we're all going to enjoy it. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is Ms. Swanger.
Good news, Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, members of the Board. A certain aspect of what happens in the CTE classrooms certainly involves STEM. A couple of months ago, we talked about STEM in our elementary STEM labs. Well, we have a couple of celebrations that I'm proud to bring to you this evening. We have... Get this going. We have participated in the Science, Math, and Technology Center of North Carolina. And this is the group that is under the Burroughs Wellcome Foundation. And they work tirelessly to improve STEM education across the state of North Carolina. You might remember when we were working with Dr. Sam Houston, who is the chair of this organization, to create Nesbit. He came and talked with us multiple times about how do we infuse STEM in Buncombe County Schools? And so I'm proud to be associated with this organization. And we have two outstanding educators who have recently been honored by them. So on April 27th, we celebrated STEM excellence across North Carolina. One of our retired mathematics educators, Marta Garcia, you may remember, elementary math coach, she was recognized as well. But we have before us this evening the K-8 Science, Math, and Technology Teacher of the Year for the state of North Carolina. And that's Ms. Jennifer Tatum from Fairview Elementary. So Jennifer, come on down. And got to spend the evening on Saturday with Jennifer and her family and celebrate among many, many celebratory events throughout the day. And here's a brief video about Jennifer's classroom.
I probably should be a statistic. I am one of four kids raised by a single mom. My mom was a strong woman, but I can attribute the success I've been able to have as an adult and the fact that I was able to go to college and pursue a career I wanted because of teachers. So when I made the decision of what I wanted to be, it was kind of no question. I needed to give to students the opportunity that I was given.
Her love and passion for the children and for the professions shines in everything that she does. She's very intentional about making a personal connection with every child on day one. If I'm having a bad day, I know I can walk in Ms. Tatum's class, and enjoyment of learning is going to cheer me up and make me smile.
We have a long-running joke that fifth-grade teachers need to be stallions and not lip and zanners, you know, the dancing courses. And she is a true stallion. She's dedicated. She's going to do her best every time. And when she doesn't do her best, she refines it. So she becomes later even better.
One teacher can make all the difference. I'm willing to do anything to meet kids where they are. I always want to be the one that's making sure all the doors stay open and no doors are closed for them because of something they can't control.
Division. All right. So we know it's multiplication, or we know it's division. Carter, make an argument.
I think it goes with the...
I would say the biggest change in myself over the last sixteen years has been my ability to work with and collaborate with people and with teachers.
She has pitched for the past two years to our curriculum leadership team to lead optional PD for the staff after school that has to do with technology. And I think from there, the staff have just bonded with her. And so they know they can go to her and celebrate successes. They also know that she's going to be there, and she'll help them troubleshoot.
I have always called her a guidepost from day one. She understands standards. She understands children's learning. She understands movement in the classroom.
She integrates technology and math and science and hands-on stations so that the students are always up and moving and talking, collaborating in the classroom. And she's embedded that curriculum in all of the activities that they're doing.
I have to think I'm preparing you for a different workforce than what exists right now. And so anytime we give them a STEM project, it's about having a problem and coming to a solution and coming to it with a group of peers. So regardless of what career or workforce they're going out to, those are crucial skills for them to be able to do.
Sure. So like if Kayla's short, and the current's going like this, I want to...
I guess it's cliche or whatever that you can go anywhere with it, but it truly is. I see people that completely change their lives because they, you know, because there's somebody that believed in them. So I think that's the beauty of it, and the beauty of being in education is that there's constantly another set of kids that needs some other adult pouring into them. So, you know, I just am blessed that I get to do it.
We are so fortunate to have her in Buncombe County Schools. And visit her classroom at some point in time, and you will be engaged, and you will not want to leave. So Jennifer, come in.
Well, I did not have anything prepared, but I do think it should be mentioned that when I first started teaching, my very first year of teaching, Madam Chairman was my mentor.
And I am the cause of her excellence.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So it does date back to that. Certainly, Ms. Anne came into my room and continued to tell me that teachers aren't... You think all teachers are like this, but they're not. So you keep working like that. But I am extremely blessed to do what I do, as you heard in the thing. And it is a lot about heart and about passion. And I want to say a special thank you to Ms. Reed, who has seen that in me and who actually was the nominator of this award. So I had the privilege to work with her. And now that she's here, she is pouring into many, many educators. So I thank her for that, and I thank her for seeing that in me. And I appreciate your endless effort to allow us to do what we do. You do what you do great, and that allows us to do what we can do great. So thank you.
A picture made, Dr. Baldwin, and Sandy. She would have made me love science.
Sandy.
I can't even spell science.
And all those other districts at this celebration were fighting for these candidates. They said, "Oh, I bet they would love to come work for us." And we said, "No.
Mr. Pace will appreciate this. When I was concerned, they rolled computers in on cars. Nine times out of ten, they didn't work. And so she had this lesson planned for me to observe, and I just kept thinking, "Ooh, that's why I got that kind of deal." But she would modify her lesson, and it'd go right on. Now, they all have computers, don't they? And they work.
We also had a second award winner. Ms. Carla Billups, our elementary STEM coach, come on down. There's an instructional leader category that we felt Carla would just be a shining star, and certainly was. And lots of stiff competition from administrators to our best of the instructional leadership.
So here's her video. I was the kid always asking why my mom allowed us to be very creative. And my dad was a carpenter, so we used to play on the lathe when he wasn't home. We used to do all that kind of stuff. And I think some of that's missing.
All right. So this is going to actually be your house.
Yes.
We have STEM programs in our middle schools. We have our STEM high schools. There was really nothing happening in the elementary schools. The STEM lab was her idea. And the reason why we have them is because of her. If I need a lesson, or if we're coming to the STEM lab, and I'm feeling like, "Oh, I don't know what I'm supposed to do," I know in a heartbeat, I can email her. She'll come out and model lessons in that framework and help you come up with ways to engage the students in the activity.
Okay, look at that process. How can we improve our design so it does work?
And we're really focusing on the engineering process. So if you're down here and your first design doesn't work, well, what didn't work? What did you learn from that? They're taught to not give up. And it's so great to see when they are successful after they've worked so hard.
Those kids who don't always succeed in the regular academic class, they can rock it in the STEM lab because there's not a right or wrong answer. They're just trying to solve the problem.
Boys and girls, we are going to make and design a bunk bed that is just right for Goldie Locks and the baby bear.
What she's doing is actually saying, "This is what STEM looks like. It doesn't have to be this fancy thing. It doesn't have to have high-tech gear. It doesn't have to cost a lot of money. It's really about the engineering design process." And it's really amazing to hear the students talking like engineers, and they're in kindergarten. And they're talking, and they're using the word prototype. And they're going back to the drawing board and fixing something and refining their design.
STEM Day is our mini-pop-up museum for a day. It's to bring STEM to all of our families. Our schools and some of our corporate sponsors,
Our schools and some of our corporate sponsors, they come in and they set up booths and hands-on experiments for the kids to do. Because of the STEM labs and because of the STEM Saturdays, parents are also starting to do that stuff at home with their kids and realizing it's something that anybody can do. She's really helped me change my thinking about science, that science is inquiry and those students, they can discover those ideas if I just trust them and I give them the tools. They'll, they'll figure out the big ideas and then I'm just the person who can go along with them and help support them while they're doing it. But what I've learned is that we underestimate what our kids can do. It's amazing what they can do. You just have to give them the space and the time.
Wait a second. They've got a great idea.
I do think we're going to raise a generation of kids who want to get out there and solve problems.
Well, thank you, the board, for letting us have this opportunity. And Dr. Baldwin, thank you for your STEM initiative. And it's not often that in a career that you're handed something and said, make it happen. And so I was allowed to, to do that. And there, there's nothing like that. But I also need to thank Dr. Baldwin, Mrs. Swanger, Barry, Wendy Fusco and Brian Macarelli for nominate me. I got the news as I was driving home, it popped up on my phone and I was like, what? And so I had to pull over and read it. And I sent it to Brian and I said, do you know anything about this? And he goes, yeah, we pulled one over on you because I had no idea. So it was really, really a nice surprise and a big honor. And being able to do what we've done in the STEM labs is probably the best thing I've ever been able to do with my career because it lets me be creative every day. I get to make stuff up all the time. Teachers will say, I need a STEM challenge for this. And so that, I get to do that and get to play a lot and that's really important. So thank you.
Madam Chair, picture. Madam Chair, they want you to... We also had a student finalist that was visited and interviewed. So Buncombe County was well-represented across the state. And as we look at K-12 STEM, we've seen a bit at high school. We know the elementary piece is in place. Next month, I plan to bring to you what the middle school component will look like because we were just notified that we will have a $35,000 grant from Duke. And so we'll, we'll work in the middle school area for our STEM. So we're very proud of the K-12 work that's happening and thank you for supporting STEM education.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Other than we're just happy as we can be? All right, it's now a public comment. Do we have a public comment?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, we have one public comment today. That would be Paula Dingo.
Thank you. We have no public comment. The next item on the agenda is the action agenda. First item under action is Budget Amendment Number 6. We've budgeted all afternoon, let me just say. Do y'all have any more questions? I can't imagine.
But this one is love about the big budget. This is just the amendment.
Well, I don't care. It spells budget. Any questions? Hearing none. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, Approval of Funding Request for Current Expense and Capital Appropriations and Submissions for the 1920 Preliminary Budget to the County Commissioners. Any questions from the board? Yes, North Buncombe, you can leave. If you thought you were going to get out of here without me doing that, you are W-R-O-N-G.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda and amend the action item of Approval of Funding Request for Current Expense and Capital Appropriation and Submission of the 2019-2020 Preliminary Budget to County Commissioners.
Will you speak into your microphone?
You want me to say that again?
So the hearing impaired can have...
Just going to make me say it again?
Okay. No, you don't have to repeat that.
I don't? Okay.
I don't think so. You want to amend it?
Yes, I would like to amend that.
Uh huh.
To include the $728,640 to maintain the instructional assistance.
Do you have a second?
I would second that. What's, what I'm linked to here on the website includes that already.
Yes.
So I don't know if we need to add it because it's already there in what's here. But if we do need to add it, then I will gladly second it.
It's included?
Included. So there's a bulleted item here that is, that pulls out the 728,640. And so the total amount is $5,014,945?
Yes, 728,640. So that's, that's different than the way we left leaving the work session this afternoon. Is that correct? After a great deal of discussion, this is back to the original, what was presented to us there. Okay? Just for clarity. Thank you.
Okay. My apologies. I will withdraw my motion. I did not review that after the work session.
That's all right. We've reviewed so much, we don't know what we're doing today. Okay, does anybody else have a comment or a question?
Well, do you need a motion on it first or do you want to have discussion first?
Let's have a motion.
I'll move that we adopt as presented in this, in this memorandum. That's part of the board packet.
All right. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, now we can have discussion. There's a little bit of silence going on here.
We've discussed our guts out.
I know, we have.
I have maybe a question for Ms. Frisbee, if that's okay? Or it might lead to a couple of questions. Allow her to head this way. So we, Ms. Frisbee, as you're moving this direction, we talked about a lot of things this afternoon. And from a, from a budgetary perspective, from where, where your position is, are you comfortable with this coming from us to move forward as a recommendation to the county commissioners for new money that becomes recurring dollars, that's tied into real people who already have jobs as we move forward? And you're comfortable with this?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. Is there anything that you would like to add to that or want to share or change or? Nope, we're good.
No, sir.
Okay.
I'm good.
I think it's important, Madam Chair, and for the board and really for the public to understand that what we're doing here is asking for, I think the term that, for the most part, most of this, we're trying to look into, Dr. Baldwin's term is the crystal ball and figure out what the state budget is going to be. We have 700 and...
Around 712.
We have around 712 employees in Buncombe County Schools that are paid out of local funding, county tax dollars. It comes from the county commissioners. This, what we're requesting is based upon what we think state pay raises are going to be, those, those additional costs that go with that, with retirements and benefits and so forth, to cover those people that already work here. These are not, with the exception of the, the one portion, these are not new positions.
That is correct.
These are all people that are already with us. And it makes maybe too much sense and maybe it's too obvious, but if the state of North Carolina funds these raises for the people that are paid out of state dollars, the people doing the same jobs that the county over many years has elected to fund, we need to be able to be whole with those people as well. So that's what this request is about, the majority of it, with the exception of the seven new positions of $567,000.
Yes, sir.
Is to take care of those 700-plus people that already work in Buncombe County Schools and trying to project what are those raises going to be and the associated costs. And that's where we're going with this. And I just think it's important for us to remember that. And when we have conversations with the public commissioners publicly here tonight, that, that we're clear on what this is. We're not asking for $5 million to build something or to initiate something that's new. It's for things that already exist. And these funds will be recurring funds. They will become a part of the budget if we're, if, if they're given to us and they will move forward from year to year to year, provided there aren't any setbacks or cuts or anything along those lines. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
One addition to that, I would say, is that this is all recurring positions except for, we are requesting funds for seven new behavioral health specialists. At the request really of the Buncombe County Commissioners last year, who said that they really understood the need for mental health services in the county. And so we are coming back to them respectfully, saying, all right, y'all said you wanted this, here it is. So that, that is the one new piece in addition to the 712 positions that we already have that are funded by the county.
Correct.
Anyone else have a comment?
Just a quick clarification.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just a quick clarification. You're approving this budget amount with these line items. The superintendent, based on the discussion you had in work session, will be able to adjust the actual presentation to the county to reflect the discussions you had in closed session. So bottom line, the numbers won't change, but the manner in which the superintendent presents it to the county commissioners might change based on some of the priorities and points you made during the work session. So don't be surprised if some of the verbiage might change because this document, obviously there was not time to address any of your points and concerns after the work session before you voted tonight. So just to make you aware, so you don't have to add that to the motion. The superintendent has that ability to make the presentation to the county fit the discussion you had during the work session.
And you're going to have to refresh my memory because we had so much discussion.
Just like the expansion budget, the teacher assistance, if he feels like things need additional explanation beyond these documents, he's got the leeway to do that, based on the discussion you just had. Because you had some pretty robust discussions and he may want to add some of the points you came up with to his presentation to the commissioners.
Okay. But we would still be asking for the $728,640 for instructional assistance.
Yes, ma'am. The money will not change. What it is earmarked for will not change or what it's being asked for will not change. It's just some of the, the explanations and the manner of the presentation.
Yes.
Yes. But you're correct. None of, none of that will change.
Okay. Thank you. I don't think I have any other questions. No angst? Your board worked very diligently this afternoon on this budget. Very diligently. I would entertain a motion to approve. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion and a second? Lord, let's vote and go on. Could I get all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next is the Haw Creek Elementary School additions and renovations project, approval of construction manager at risk. Questions for Tim Fearley.
I don't have any of this.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I enthusiastically move that we approve this recommendation.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
I enthusiastically second.
Could we enthusiastic vote, Lee, in vote? Never mind. Would you vote for it, please?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Isn't that voting for it? Okay. North Buncombe High School, authorization of change order to increase scope of re-roofing. It's also Mr. Fearley. Do we have questions for Mr. Fearley in this regard?
I have a question.
Come on down.
Mr. Fearley, I understand from reading this document that we gain both time and money by changing the scope and including this Phase 8 in with Phase 7 or whatever it was. But why were they originally two separate phases?
Because we only had funding for Phase 7. We've been doing very incremental funding over about 10 years. And this is new funding from the capital outlay, the current Article 4042 budget.
Okay. That answers my question.
And was the most recent phase in last year's?
Yes. And it's completing.
So it hadn't been any lapse time where it took a year to get started and it...
No, he's, he's on the job. He's kind of finishing up and a little bit dragging his feet, waiting for this.
Waiting for this, yeah. Understand.
Any other questions from the board? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Some of it.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is Owen High School, capital outlay, athletic allotment request.
North Buncombe Middle School.
Middle School driveway.
Well, I checked off the wrong thing and let me tell you. I drove up that driveway day before yesterday. What an experience that was. Oh, some of you have been up that driveway as well. North Buncombe High School, authorization of change order to increase scope of re-roofing. This is Mr. Fearley.
Middle School.
No.
Did I say?
We did the re-roofing. Middle School.
It says high school.
Middle School.
All right. I've been up that road too, but I just... Okay. North Buncombe Middle School driveway and site improvements project, approval to change order for additional undercut and stone required due to poor soil conditions. Any questions from the public or from the board about the soil conditions in the north end of the county?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Just because you're at Inca and your soil's better than ours, now I'd be real careful.
It's really about the soil, but Mr. Fearley, in your letter, or rather, your memo dated April 24th to Dr. Baldwin, in the opening paragraph, you make mention that there was a delay, well, preparation of paving in the new entrance at North Buncombe Middle School was delayed due to a low-voltage internet provider's inability, inability to relocate line to new Duke Energy poles. Now, to me, it seems to me that in a project such as this, that the low-voltage internet provider should have been on the ball. And it set us behind and it allowed more rain to... I, I just have a concern about that. And I don't know if it's necessarily directed to you, maybe more so to our attorney, but what do you do in those situations? I feel like in this case, in this case, it has cost us money. It's cost us money because that delay allowed more inclement weather to fall, the, the soil and the work site to be less than conducive for paving and getting compacted, et cetera, et cetera. So it seems to me like we should have recourse against that provider.
What we can do is that, I haven't had a chance to sit down and look at those circumstances with Mr. Fearley, but you're exactly right. There's all kinds of potential actions for breach of contract, time-wise, for repair costs, additional architects and engineering fees. It depends on what was in the scope of the contract damages.
I'm not so sure. This was an existing provider, if I understand. It was, in other words, a internet provider who was using, had space or was allowed to carry their line on Duke Energy poles. But apparently Duke Energy placed new poles and neither the provider could not negotiate a contract with Duke Energy or, or delayed in some way, shape or form. It didn't get done. And as a result, it set Mr. Fearley's project back significantly. And now we're faced with this, I don't know how much it's probably costing us, but I know there's an increase in cost here due to the delay.
$60,000.
$60,000.
Primary time issue. There was no damage to our property.
No.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd be happy to look at it with him, but yeah, that's...
We have no control of the weather, but we do have control maybe of encouraging people to do what we need them to do in a timely fashion. I'll just leave it at that.
Right. But I'd be happy to look at it with him. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Tim.
It's a frustrating situation, is it not? All right.
So do we vote then?
If you're going to look at it or?
Oh, no. I think you have to move forward with the work.
Right.
Yeah, that would be a tangential issue.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion to approve. Do I? I don't? Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Could I get a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. North Buncombe Middle School will appreciate that. Owen High School, capital outlay allotment request. Are there questions for this item, concerning this item?
I have a question or maybe a couple of questions, Madam Chair, and I'm not sure who asked them to. So as I...
Tiffany?
Maybe. As I look through, it appears to me that we have, the, the cover letter is going to, whoever the company is, for $9,660.93. When I look at the three bids, that's the highest of the three. And when I read through the email chain... highest of the three. And when I read through the email chain, I find a portion that says, "Coach Lee has indicated any of the models would fit the needs of the department," noting that all of the washers are virtually the same. Coach Lee feels the 840911 bid is acceptable, which is the low bid. So I'm helping-
Just curious as to why they chose that one.
Understand why we wound up with the high of three bids.
You can come down as well, yeah.
All three of those prices are pretty good for 60-pound washer. They really are. But we've gone with the, the recommendation is to go with the high bidder.
We were supposed to come to you in April with this request for the low-bid washing machine, but we had some assistance from Clark and his staff to try to come out and fix our laundry machine, along with an $800 service call from the company in Charlotte. And they all deemed the washing machine to be truly defunct. So when Clark made some recommendations, and we checked further about the original three vendors in terms of service to the new machine that we buy, there's a local service provider who can provide service on that machine. I think it's about $1,000 more. Clark had made some recommendations about another company to consider that was even more expensive, but the reason that we shifted that choice from the least expensive to the more expensive has to do with a local provider who can provide service on the machine.
After purchase?
Correct.
So my question then would be, because I don't know the answer to this. I don't know that we've ever been presented with something quite like this to Mr. Campbell. Can we do that as board?
Yes, you can.
Based upon service, not-
Yes. You can take into account any reasonable reason. When you look at it, the low price is not a mandate. You know, it's the most qualified overall, and looking at your overall needs and cost of service and long-term, and the bids are so close together, the bid law is clearly providing, the cases clearly provide that it's a good-faith decision. After you receive the bids, there is no mandate to always take the low number, and that's a rational reason not to take the low number as the local service provider.
And is the local, maybe Mr. Wyatt can answer this, is the local service provider a benefit because of... So I always go back to my car. I'm going to have to change the oil in my car every 3,000 to 5,000 miles. I should. But if the transmission goes out, that's a different item. So are we talking about service for maintenance types of things that we've got a contract out with somebody, or are we talking about a local provider who would be providing work, maybe if it breaks in a bad way, that we hope it doesn't break? That's my concern. What exactly is it?
The maintenance our staff will perform, the parts availability, support it costs. And then if we run into the issues we can't repair, having a local service provider is crucial.
And how long is $1,200 crucial? I mean, it... So it's the first time something goes bad, but I think all of these were five-year warranties, three-year warranties, three-fives? Something like that. The warranties were all about the same, it looked like, from what I was reading.
This was one from last month, twenty years.
Two zero twenty?
Yeah.
Two.
This one, you'd have this one for about 20 years, correct?
We had the other one, I think, about 15 years. I'm not sure about that. And I think when we originally chose the least expensive, we thought we had to do that. And just some conversation here has helped us to understand that we don't necessarily have to do that, and we explored that maintenance issue, because it really was problematic for us.
And so we got similar types of things at other high schools, similar types. And do you see in five other high schools, once a year, you've got to deal with it in some kind of way, or is it, you don't have anything going on for four or five years?
It's spread, but we do have a lot of problems with washing stuff. Until they start getting other things.
I appreciate the extra work and research for service and those kinds, and trying to stretch the dollars as far as we can. My fear is, and I'm not prepared to oppose this, but my fear is, do we create something in terms of, precedence is too strong a term, but going forward, I just don't want to put us in a situation where we have to answer a lot of calls from other vendors in different types of ways.
Sure.
It hurts us as a board, that puts you on the clock, and we have to defend some things and that type of thing.
Sure. And I think your point's a good one. The board, and, you know, we're talking about a washer that's very much needed, but you're talking about, as long as the quality is pretty consistent, the default is to go with the low bid. So your point is an accurate one. There has to be a reason when you have fungible items of similar quality to not go with the low bid. So it would certainly be within the purview of this board to say, "Well, let's not necessarily create a question mark where we don't have to, and let's go with the low bid." And I think the products are all similar. I think you've, the reason for the recommendation has come to you, but like everything else, it's just a recommendation, and you folks could say, "Appreciate it, but let's stick with the low bid on it."
But you're confident with the service provider's the issue, and the service provider's not going to be able to provide with the other two pieces of equipment?
That's correct.
Or the other two companies, the parts. It's the parts availability. I'm comfortable with the recommendation, Madam Chair. My question's been answered, but some others may have some other questions. Thank you all.
Questions? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion. Thank you, Tiffany. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Excuse me.
Are you opposed, or copying your-
That was a no. That was a no. I just couldn't get it out.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of AB Tech Technical Community College Board of Trustees nomination. And I would like to say that this board has taken this very seriously. We have received the applications, and we have reviewed them. We have taken special time to review them, and that we received multiple applications for this. And at this time, I'm going to ask the board attorney to talk to us about this vote and explain the process that we're going to use to make this appointment.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Board members, you're appointing to a vacant seat to fill the unexpired term until 2020. And the process is you have elected to receive applications, and you've had time to review those to make your decision. So the process that we would use tonight is a simple motion and second for one of the named applicants. There would then be a discussion period, like any other motion, that if you'd like to say something in favor of the applicant. The question also comes up when someone is nominated, or a motion is made for an individual, if a board member feels like there is another individual that they would like to vote for, you are free to say that during the discussion period. So in other words, it is not inappropriate for a board member to say, "I'm going to vote against this person because I am prepared to vote for someone else." If the first person who is put forward through a motion does not get four votes, then the floor will be open to name someone else. And we will just vote on applicants until somebody gets four votes. But we will start, and I would recommend that the Chair at this time open the floor for a motion for one of the applicants.
At this time, I open the floor for a nomination for one of the applicants.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a nomination of K. Ray Bailey.
Second. All right. We have a nomination and a second?
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Yes. I would like to just mention that I am a big K. Ray Bailey fan, and would vote for him at any opportunity. However, in this case, I feel like it is my responsibility to think about what's maybe not best for K. Ray Bailey, but what is best for AB Tech. And with my experience working with boards of directors all across western North Carolina, what I've learned is that a board needs to be made up of community representatives that are, that can function equally, and that each person can have an equal voice. And I feel like with the depth of experience and expertise, and the amount of time that Mr. Bailey has spent at AB Tech, that his voice would ring out louder than the others, and that for that reason, we wouldn't have equal representation on that board. And this is a very critical time for AB Tech, and it's my responsibility to vote for what's best for AB Tech. So though I have the deepest respect and fondness for Ray Bailey, I won't vote for this nomination for that reason.
Other comments?
I certainly appreciate Cindy's comments, Madam Chair, and she and I have had the opportunity to contact or speak about this as well. I would just simply say that Ray Bailey retired from AB Tech in 2007. He's been away from that arena for 12 years. He has intentionally kept his distance from that arena for the very reasons you cite. However, in looking at the candidates and considering the qualifications, not on the person, but if you put in front of me a list of qualifications per candidate, redact the names. Don't let me, I don't want to see it. But if you look at a candidate who brings the qualifications of 53 years in education, beginning in this very school system as an instructor, a coach, and then transitioning into the community college system, where he served as the director of basically the industrial education program, where a lot of the CTE that we're referring to now, he was out in the field in the '60s and working with companies, trying to offer educational opportunities in plant, both for new lines that the factory may be bringing on, as well as to bring up basic skills of those workers. And then from there, transitioning into a vice president's position of finance, where he became very familiar with both, not just the local budget, but also the federal monies that would flow through the college, as well as the state budget, very thorough familiar realization with that. And then being, having the vote of confidence to be made president of the college. And I would just like to say that AB Tech, and Cindy points out, I want the best for that college. AB Tech, in my mind, is a jewel in this community. It has provided opportunities for so many people who otherwise would not have opportunities. And I think that the health of that institution is of utmost importance. I can tell you from actually being employed there through a transition period, from 1959 to 2007, there were three college presidents over that time: Mr. Simpson, Mr. Haynes, and Mr. Bailey. From 2007 till present, if you count the interims, there have been five. I say that simply to say that while one may question the experience that a person would bring to that arena, I think that experience would be good, because that man is one vote. But the other people, the other board members that sat on that board, they lack that experience. They lack that knowledge. He has it. He has even served on the State Board of Community Colleges. And I think, again, you wrap all that up into just one individual, and I think we would be remiss not to select a person of those credentials, that character. And then, going back to community, I think at one time, he was serving over 30 different committees and community outreach programs, instrumental in many of them, you know, the workforce development, local workforce development committees, the SOCON committee, the list goes on and on. I can't even rattle them off. But if it was a committee that was of merit, if it was something serious, I dare say, you go back and look at the memberships of those committees that were game changers in our community, somewhere on that list, I bet you find Ray Bailey. So I say that.
Thank you. Other comments from other board members? Then I'll call the question. The motion on the floor is for Ray Bailey, and we have a second from Peggy Buchanan. And so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Okay. We will instruct Ms. Matthews to-
Madam Chair, what did you have for a number on the vote?
It would be five.
Was it six to one?
Six, one.
Okay. I didn't, I was going to ask for a show of hands, just so we-
Do you want it?
No, no. If it was six, one, I couldn't tell where all the voices were, so I'm just curious.
Okay. Ms. Matthews will now get, do the paper process, and take our recommendation to the Asheville City Board in a timely fashion, because they need to take action by May the 6th. Is that correct?
Monday night.
Monday night. All right.
Madam Chair, is it my understanding that we will have another opportunity to do this again in 2020?
Yes, it is to fill the unexpired term. So this seat, this exact seat will be up again for your consideration in 2020. That's correct.
Which is tomorrow.
Just about, just about, yes.
It is.
I just want to say, I was just very impressed with all of the candidates, and I think it's just really a good problem that we had, so I'm glad that there's a future.
Thank you for doing that. They were, our applicants were impressive to come from the community. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And the items on the consent agenda are the May, shoot, the April 2nd regular meeting, open session minutes, April 24, special called meeting work session. The policies for second reading is 4120 domicile residence or residence requirement. And then the last item is the personnel report. Tonight, the personnel list for action that we're going to take is to appoint Mr. Taylor Baldwin for the position of CTE Director. He's the son of our superintendent. This board has spent a good deal of time discussing this situation in closed session. Before we vote, I'd like for our attorney to discuss the board policy and how this issue will be handled by the administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, part of your personnel list, as the Chair has stated, is superintendent's son, Mr. Taylor Baldwin, for CTE Director. If this board votes in favor of that this evening, you have been notified in advance, which is required by statute and your policy. You've had a chance to discuss it and consider the issue in closed session in accordance with general statute again. If you do vote in favor of this particular position, the process is pretty straightforward. His direct supervisor will be Ms. Swanger. She would be the direct supervisor of that position anyway. So again, that satisfies both policy and statute. In addition, the superintendent will be appointing Ms. Swanger as his designee for any issues regarding the CTE Director position and any decisions that need to be made. So there will actually be no decision-making by the superintendent with regards to his own son. That would all be handled by Ms. Swanger. So as far as policy, as far as statute, and as far as ethics, you are free to vote in favor of this recommendation if you're otherwise satisfied with the candidate.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I would also like to tell you that if my memory serves me correctly, there were 11 applicants, and the committee chose to interview four. And two were in-house and two were out-house? Well, there were four. There were four that were interviewed. And then I also need to say that we are, when we vote on this personnel report, we have an addendum that was carried in. You had that in your packet when we went into closed session. So at this-
And I'm sorry, I did need to say, for the record, the superintendent had no involvement in the interview, no involvement in the recommendation, and no involvement in the discussion of the board.
So could I get a vote on, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is the information agenda, which includes the financial report, 2019, 2020 budget process resource materials, and policies for first reading is policy 3405, students at risk of academic failure. The announcements of future meeting, our next board meeting will be June the 6th with a work session, and closed session will begin, let's see, there's a dinner and a session beginning at 5:00, and then dinner will be at 5:30 with closed session. At this time, you can tell I'm worn out, and I would love to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.